Motion by Director Ware, seconded by Director Marcus to approve the agenda with the changes noted. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Moving on, three point O, the consent agenda. Those items are listed in your board packet and it includes the meetings from our last board meeting on June fourteenth, the special board meeting on June fourteenth, finance checks and wires along with the payroll checks and direct deposits. Anyone have any questions, concerns regarding the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Motion by Director Bossler, seconded by Director Christian to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We on public comments, any public comments this evening? Seeing none, move on to staff, student, and constituent reports.
No, none of those as well.
We don't have any reports this evening, so we'll move into item ten point four, which is the inspect update. Yeah. So I will just leave with a little bit, Jason, are you with us?
Yes, sir, I'm here. Todd, can you hear me? Okay, I can't hear you guys at all. There, now I can hear something.
All I gotta do is get Steve even closer to this room and fix it itself.
Yep, now I can hear you.
Okay, now you're hearing me, Jason?
Yes, sir.
So what I suggested to the board here was that by law we have to have a LTFM plan in place by July, submitted by July thirty first. You have built an LTFM plan that is generalized to the degree that we can, after the inspect report, after the LTFM committee would meet with the information of the inspect report, that we can tweak the current plan enough to accommodate a plan there, or we can resubmit a more detailed plan at a later date.
That is correct, very correct. Sounds good, I'm going to attempt to share my screen here.
I got a question about the, when are we supposed to see the final report for, of?
It's, we just got, literally just got it, oh, so that is the final report?
So is that something, share it all during the evening before LTFM?
Yeah, I'll share it out. I just didn't feel we had enough time to really delve into it prior to tonight.
I just think that way, you know, when we have the LTFM meetings with somebody else, some other thoughts, please say.
Yep. And then, sir. I mean, I could take it to know tonight yet.
Yeah.
I mean, just, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, you have it, Jason.
Sounds good. And you guys are seeing my screen okay?
We are.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll run through this, as Todd said, we really made this more of a generalized plan, so we can tweak it in the future. So, very similar to what we've done in the past, review the history and the basics, review the funding for your district, do a reconcile of the previous year, a three-year look ahead, which is, again, a very simplified version, and then the full plan and next steps. So, right now, we are at the three hundred and eighty dollars a pupil unit, and your buildings are of the thirty-five year age, so you are receiving the max funding based on your annual student enrollment. So, your funding, obviously, adjusts as you get more kids or lose kids within your district. So, when we look at what our LTFM plan is and what it historically has been, about thirty-four thousand dollars annually for our health and safety related costs, so fiscal hazard, other hazardous materials, the environmental health and safety management, and fire safety. And then, we have been planning for the unplanned or emergency repairs, about fifty thousand dollars annually. The roof maintenance, we have ten thousand in there, and then the bond payments of about seventy-one thousand. So that's what kind of makes it up. And then, looking at it, just kind of in chart form here, you can see the bond dollars in the red, and those expire in two thousand thirty-one, and you can see a little step down in two thousand thirty. The yellow is our health and safety costs, and then the green is what you have available to actually perform projects on an annual basis.
So the rep represents the paydown of the bond, correct?
Correct, that's what the district has committed to the bond payments from past projects. So, you know, you get about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars annually in LTFM.
But this, this chart does not, does not show the carryover?
No, it does not. So. Going through, so projects that were completed this year, top right corner are the health and safety projects, just annual costs, you have due list inspections every year, you have a health and safety contract with Northwest Service Co-op, as well as the health and safety management assistance, that would be like Barb Schmidt's doing your ocean inspections, and then a big chunk of that's the fire safety. Interior surfaces, you can see the projects that were completed this year, gym floor refinishing, press box, football shed repairs, batting cages, mechanical, some generator stuff, installing the line boiler pumps. Just kind of jumping around a little bit, the site projects, football and baseball field supplies. And then, as we look at the left column, new shed, shed door for the football field, walk-in cooler freezer, and electrical football field lighting, oop, I apologize, I got a typo on that one. So, those were the projects completed this year. And when we look at what was spent, about thirty thousand in the health and safety category, the top chunk, and about a hundred and sixty-nine thousand in the bottom, under the deferred maintenance section. So a total of a hundred and ninety-nine thousand was spent this year from your LTFM bucket. Questions on that?
This information came from Joan, correct? Or the reconciliation that you put together came from Rizima Joan?
Correct, she runs a report for me every year on what expenses have been coded to LTFM annually.
Jason, why does Mike wear, how come our physical hazards are so low? I mean, can you elaborate on that a little bit? I mean, what were you hitting up or hitting with those that were not?
That you're not spending anything?
Yeah.
Typically, our physical hazard expenses are like bulb recycling, I'm just trying to think back, Mike. Ball recycling, sometimes it's radon testing, if I remember correctly, fits within that bucket. I can't think off the top of my head what the, the full list of allowable expenditures are in that bucket.
So it's a pretty, it's kind of a generic catch-all then?
It is a generic catch-all, and, you know, I run into quite a few districts that just don't put a lot into that bucket.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Any other questions? All right, keep moving then. So when we look at the three-year project look ahead, we have our annual allowances for the electrical, interior surfaces, mechanical, plumbing, and roofing, and then the gym floor refinishing that is planned for next summer, correct, Todd?
No, this summer.
This summer, okay.
No, next, next month, or maybe yet this month, I think it's virtually been obvious, yep.
Yep, and then historically, we have shown the next two years, but with everything that you have going on, and getting that report in our hands, I, as, as Todd said, reviewing it with the committee and the board as a whole, and bringing recommendations for the future years, gives us flexibility and able to change the plan. So, when we look at how that looks in the overall spreadsheet, can you guys see my, no, here, let me go, can you see my laser pointer now?
Yeah.
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 Okay, so, this is our base here, our twenty twenty-three, so you can see that hundred and ninety-nine thousand that we spent. So you started the year with a fund balance of two hundred and eighty thousand. You add your revenue, this year, about that hundred and forty-eight, and the expenditures, so we closed out the year at approximately two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in LTFM fund balance. So that carries up to this point here. Got an estimated hundred and seventy-eight thousand, so that's.
Can you make your numbers a little bigger for us?
I don't know if I can.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to as well, and I can't figure it out.
Well, yep, I don't think I can. Sorry, I'm not very familiar with Google Meet, so.
Oh.
Bear with me.
Well, your phone there is better.
Oh, shoot, they won't let me use the laser pointer, okay, let me make them bigger here. All right. So I don't think I, can you see my hand moving? Okay, so, in this year, we have a hundred and nineteen thousand in expenditures planned. We have that carryover of two twenty-nine. We have a revenue of about a hundred and seventy-eight. So, if this plan holds true, you'll have a fund balance of about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. And you can see how that carries forward to the future with our fund balance, the way the plan is right now.
Nineteen though does not, that's just the, the things that you earmarked so far?
Correct, yep.
So after the, we analyze the inspect plan and we make decisions, we're, we're spending money out of that two eighty-eight, correct?
Correct, so I mean, if you look up here, here's what we have planned.
Right.
It's only sixty thousand.
Yeah.
And I think realistically, once we get through that inspect report, that sixty thousand will become much more than that.
Right. Okay. Questions on, we might. This fund balance is going forward after the current year, or the carryover amount, they're really just, if we're spending money, they won't be those numbers, obviously.
Correct, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you know, most likely, I think, you know, even last year's plan, you know, we were, we were spinning that down relatively quickly when we started looking at, you know, some of the building envelope issues of the nineteen thirty-seven.
Yeah.
So, all right, if we keep going, next steps, part of your board packet is you have the revenue sheet, you have the expenditure sheet, the statement of assurance, and the board resolution, a part of your packet for approval tonight. This needs to be submitted by the end of the month, and as Todd alluded to, we can resubmit this plan down to MDD, MDE at any point over the course of the year, if major changes are made to it. So, by submitting this does not handcuff you to the future. So when we look at it, we have our revenue projection spreadsheet, again, part of your packet. We have our expenditure application, a statement of assurance to be signed by Mr. Silk, and then the board resolution for execution tonight.
And the board resolution needs board action, obviously.
Correct.
The, the signature page where I sign, I can do that without, without a agenda item?
I, yep.
Okay. Yep, yep.
So that is the LTFM plan for now. Any other questions?
Well, just a comment, Jason, so when we can find a time to bring our LTFM committee together, we will invite you either virtually or in person to sit with us. I'll make sure, did I, maybe I didn't send you that inspect plan, we just talked about it a little bit. So I'll make sure I copy that inspect report to you, if there was a fellow board personnel there, and then we'll get an LTFM meeting scheduled, of which we'll make sure that you're invited to.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, and I'd prefer to be there in person, just eliminate having sound issues.
Yeah, and font size issues.
Yep, exactly. All right.
Okay, thank you, Jason, hang on with us here, just for a few minutes, if you would.
Sounds good, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
All right, with that, we'll move into item ten point five, is approved or not approved the LTFM plan for twenty twenty-three? The resolution for that included in your board packet.
Make a motion and we got the LTFM plan for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
All right, made a motion by Director Ware, seconded by Director Marcus to approve the LTFM plan as presented. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, now we'll do a roll call and vote, roll call vote on this since it's a resolution. Director Ware?
Yes.
Director Bossler?
Yes.
Director Christian?
Yes.
Director Marcus?
Yes.
Director DuPong?
Yes.
That resolution is approved. All right, thanks, Jason, appreciate your time.
Yes, have a good meeting.
All right, thanks, Jason, we'll talk, I'll give you a jingle tomorrow, actually.
Yep, that sounds perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, see ya.
All right, moving on, six point O, finance, fund balance.
Yeah, okay, so the, the financial, excuse me, documents were sent to you, Joan put these together. Of note, excuse me. The summer payments under payroll, or excuse me, the payroll amounted there four hundred and twenty thousand. As you know, in June, we make, what did you tell me, how many payrolls do we have in June?
Well, in May and June, we had ten.
Ten, ten payrolls, so we, so we pay our, obviously, our staff, they've earned them, well, yes, they've earned the money, but they may get it all paid out to them in June, so that's why that's lower than the normal. Otherwise, I asked Joan again, when, when she gives me this, is there anything significant that I need to point out? And she said pretty much status quo. We are moving along in that regard. Today was the start of the audit, tomorrow the auditors are on site, which will finalize these numbers. But that's where we're standing, that's a trip thirty. The expense revenue summary, you can see that we've expensed out basically a hundred percent. We're still waiting on some revenue, that's not quite at a hundred percent. But, again, that flashes itself out here, pretty much this month, and we will be finalizing that revenue side as well as the expense side here the next few weeks.
Do you have an anticipated amount on that revenue, or are we, you know, looking at deficit spending?
Right now, Joan is not committing to deficit spending. She, she thinks that we're going to be pretty darn close. There might be a, just a little bit, but, but it wouldn't be, wouldn't be significant, in her, her words.
Better idea after tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The building bond account, the only thing, if you haven't had a chance to stop down to the soup's office, you know that we've taken what was the superintendent's office and turned that into a conference room. We did buy a conference table for that room, that room is getting used all the time. And it's really been a good addition, we think, to that end of the building, and that was what was purchased out of the bond account.
Where are we on that topic?
We put it on hold. Yeah, till we got the inspect report. Yeah. So those are the three reports per se?
We should accept those.
They're just information, yeah.
Okay, move on to item six point four, fund authorization, fund management authorization.
This is the, it's included in your packet, this is an annual whereas-type document that allows us ability to invest funds. Joan is taking a real conservative approach, but she has generated some additional dollars this year. And so we would continue to invest as we see, you know, as we see fit as, really, as she thinks that we can obviously continue with cash flow, et cetera. But this allows us to do that.
We're supposed to have the designee listed in the resolution?
This is a.
Designee, individual, yeah.
It says.
I think superintendent.
Superintendent, yeah, tries to use his discretion to invest with school funds.
Which one are we on here?
Six point four.
Yeah, so superintendent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, this is a two-occasional of last year's form.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
The next one does identify some.
Yeah, well, that's the one.
Yeah.
I mean, and board approval?
Yeah, it's a resolution, we'll have to approve this one, and six point four and six point five.
Make a motion to approve fund management authorization.
All right, we have a motion by Director Ware, seconded by Director Marcus to approve the fund authorization management, investment designee. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote as well, Director Ware?
Yes.
Director Bossler?
Yes.
Director Christian?
Yes.
Director Marcus?
Yes.
Director DuPong?
Yes, that is approved.
Good. Beyond six point five.
Six point.
Fund management authorization.
Yep, this gives.
Transfer borrowing.
Yep, transfer funds, borrowing money. This gives authority to Joan, people, myself, obviously, in the past, Tina's been in there, but now we're placing that with.
This gives them authorization to transfer electronic payments, superintendent is the only one that can borrow.
Correct.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve authorization for transfer borrowing.
Correct. Duly noted, Mike, I didn't, I didn't word that very well, buddy, right? All right, a motion by Director Ware, seconded by Director Bossler to approve the fund management authorization for transfer and borrowing. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote as well, Director Ware?
Yes.
Director Bossler?
Yes.
Director Christian?
Yes.
Director Marcus?
Yes.
Director DuPong?
Yes.
All right, moving on, approved or not approved, contribution to the stone wall project not, not to exceed eleven thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents.
One of the, in, in your packet is a map or a pictorial of where we're talking. There was questions about the highway right of way, this will not impede on that highway right of way. I asked that question of the city, I asked the question of, do we know exactly how much everybody owns? And this was the documentation that was provided to me. As you can see, I put the, I wrote the, the feet in there, that was what was sent to me, a hundred and thirty-two feet, and you can see where that basically is the length of the south side of the civic center, is that correct? Saying it that way? And then at that point, because the school district owned, moving to the east, or it's not true east, but for the most part, it is, and that equals a hundred and twenty-four feet, so, pretty darn close to fifty-fifty of the ownership of the, or of the land that that wall sits on. I have not been given a, any update on any, any additional funds were raised via donations from the all-school reunion, that information I don't, I did not, I do not have, and have not been provided that. So that's where that's at. Was there any other questions regarding the walls? Got it, I don't want to punch you on the spot, but I think you had asked one. What, was there anything else?
Nope. The maintenance plan, though, I mean, where are we looking at going forward with that?
Yeah, well, I think kind of the maintenance plan is as needed, without anybody being on the hook, I mean, the first one lasted seventy years, so. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I haven't changed my opinion on that, I still think we have other needs that we need to be spending, and there should be community fundraise or something along that lines. I look at the north wall, even foundation, basin, that's starting to have water going down.
Whether there was money had put into that, we.
The wall itself, rock, they probably have been looking at the foundation, the basin, it's all, there's like. Yeah, you know, then just, what are the other things that's really what do the, the mix rate shop, you know, where that apron one from there, you know, that's all possible. I said, I just, I think we have other needs for that, like.
Do they have a timeline for, you know, this all done? No, no. And, and maybe it's, maybe we, I don't know, pre-table, again, but maybe we make it part of, well, it's not LTFM.
Now, we do a lot of, of LTFM. What? How would that, is this construction?
Not sure.
I don't know, but whether or not. And maybe it would.
That would be.
Well, it's a shared resource.
Maybe, and maybe we.
But either way.
Maybe we discuss it at that meeting.
We know we don't have enough LTFM.
Yeah, it's a small pocket, one smaller.
I mean, I, I get the person to the community and to the, you know, just general and stuff, but I just, another part of it is.
I guess I'm kind of torn too on it, there's lots of other stuff we need to spend money on, but, you know, part of it, it is right out in front of our school, it is kind of an eyesore. It's one of the first things people see as they go by, and kind of the whole good neighbor thing. Um, I don't know, I'm I'm wishy-washy on it.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's enough, and maybe the city's gonna kind of run the, the send it out for bids and all that, maybe that's gonna go all over the city.
There's a bid, this is, the bid has been let and we got numbers back, that's how the 11,454.
Is that 50/50 or is that?
Yeah. It's the project minus the donations divided by two.
So, even if it was a hundred dollars, 125 dollars a year for 70 years for maintenance on the thing, it's deferred 70 years to fix up the wall for our costs, 11,000 dollars. We haven't done, we probably don't want to touch it for another 50 to 70 years, we won't have to worry about it at that point. It's, it, and it's for our school. And that, that's the only thing, at least it's one of the first things that people see when they pull up and it's out there taped together with plumbing tape and
I'd rather knock the whole damn thing out.
I would.
Well, let's knock it down right after we knock down the 37th edition.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, I just look at things with that wall, I, I get it, but to me, if, if the community wants to save that wall, it should be community funders.
I would support us How do I word this? I would support us making it part of well, first of all, finding out if LTFM can pay for it. But also, as we look at what we're gonna do with building moving forward, we've kicked the can down the road on the 37th edition. This is the first, this came to us was just this spring. So if we take the same time limit to make a decision on this as we do the 37th edition, we've got ourselves well beyond my working time here in Boston, so.
Later again, how bad do they have to get before we have?
I, I think, I think I have a different, I have a different feel, appearance of our building than some, somebody else might. I think it reflects poorly on our district. I think the public thinks it's all our wall.
Yeah.
You know, without
They probably do, I mean, I thought I wasn't telling you that.
Right.
Does the city looked at any grant funding or anything?
I don't know.
Yeah, historical society or something like that, right?
Yeah.
I think in, in the scope of things, as far as, we haven't seen the inspector report as far as how how substantial that, that's gonna be, but I think, I think it kind of plays into, you know, understanding if it, if LTFM funds can be used for to, I'd be inclined to deferring, deferring further discussion to the LTFM committee and get, get a larger, larger picture of what the funds are gonna look like here, or what we're going to need to address areas for the building, and we do have extra money for that. Maybe we want to reach out to the city to see if any funds were donated over the reunion thing, maybe that number's changed.
I think in the write-up, in the paper, it did say something that they were unsuccessful, meaning parents, historical society.
Was it? I don't know if funds were donated, but I didn't see any public, I didn't see requests for donations, you know.
Other than the paper, there wasn't a big write-up about it in the paper.
Yeah. Was there one in the paper?
Jim Offertal did in that.
Of the wall?
Yeah.
Over there?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, recent, last week's?
It was in the, that special section.
Oh, looking back or whatever that was called, yeah. Well, there's other that too. There is no motion there. I made a motion to approve the uh, the funding of the wall up to the $1,454.29. 11,000, sorry, 11,000, sorry, 4, 4, 29.
All right, we have a motion by Director Christian, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Vosler, to approve a contribution to the Stonewall project not to exceed Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed? Believe it. That motion passes three to two. And the amount is approved. 6.7 Baird Operational Budget Assistance Update.
Yeah, so last week was a busy week for finally getting people back to us with money that we've spent on studies and had a chance to spend some time with Ryan Lager, who's the author of that Operational Budget Assistance OBA model that Baird is, that we purchased through Baird. Again, that was on Thursday. Next, first of all, I can, I can share with you, he said, you need to share with your board that your district is financially in very, very good, two berries is what he said, very, very good position. How the fund balance has grown since back in 16, I think it was, was for sure, it's steadily grown over those years. So he said that's commendable to the board and to the, to the business people at this school district, how they manage the money. That's the overall message. If you recall that model, and again, literally just got it on Thursday as well, that ranked us with six other districts, so you were one to seven on your rankings of how you had different expenditures. And we were one at times and we were seven at times and we will bring that information more closely to the board. But seven means you spent the most, but he said, you need to be cautious that that doesn't necessarily mean it's wrong. It's just, that's what you chose to do as a district. Some of it comes to coding and Joan and I, after the audit here, completed after she catches her breath, we will sit down and start looking at how she codes different things. There's some things that jump out that make me question, like, what are we quoting to that to get that number to that? My knowledge of, of that is ever-growing. My learning around that is ever-growing, so the time, next time to be spent is with Joan and I. And then I really think we have a couple of opportunities that we need to sit down in a work session with the board and look at finances going forward and other things going forward. And this will play into that. This would not be a report that you would easily display and show at a board meeting and get in-depth understanding of it. I see that much more so in a work session. But I think this is just one piece of a work session around finances that we need to be looking at going forward as to what we're gonna have with the district here in the next one to three years, one, one to five years. So we did receive, as they they did promise us executive report, again overwhelmingly praising us for the management of the funds. Certainly suggesting that we are in good financial position. And then there's something for us to look at. And really, please, Joan and I need to look at it first before we bring it to you, because if, they're just numbers on a page right now, and we need to know how those, how those are coding and it's happening to generate the numbers that we have.
When do you think would be a good time to review that as a board?
Yeah.
September?
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm only on it, trying to get that till after the auditor's report comes back, is that how, would that be more?
Could be, yeah.
When is the auditor's, the final report's out, it comes October, right?
July, the 19th, like tomorrow, wherever city.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess my thing on that is what numbers did he use in time, this is all basically last year's numbers, correct?
Yeah. Are they taking into account how
23 is not accounted for.
Well, some of that might be skewed by, sorry, Mike.
No, we're all right now, we're
By, by, by extra dollars? Are they taking those, that calculation into their?
Well, I mean, basically, they actually really helped us as a district financially, you know.
Right. I mean, we weren't in bad shape. We were great, but we're much better off. Because of the way we have better money than the same money that came in.
Fund balances come from every, a lot of it, too.
Exactly.
And, you know, I mean, not just facilities and stuff, just alberies, things like that.
Yeah, right.
I just got curious.
Yeah. Well, I, I think, I mean, I'll be honest, I think those are some decisions that we're gonna have to make as a board. You know, we have to settle contracts here, or all our groups get this year. And, and we have, as you said, some different things that we have to either address or move on from or, or not. You know, do we deficit spend to accommodate some of those things? I think deficit spending is, is slippery slope unless it's identified as a time spent expenditures versus ongoing expenditures. No, I think we have to be careful of that. But I, I, I think it takes a deep analysis of that and to pull that off in this setting just is gonna be difficult.
When do you think you'll know the full effect of the legislation session?
I got a printout this morning of the different things that are affected, that schools are affected by, and it's literally pages. Well, I have a webinar on Thursday that the impact of new legislation on school districts. And again, it's, it won't be line item for line item, but there's starting to be some themes here. Quite honestly, we, we wouldn't be able to settle a contract right now with, without having gone through all these new expectations that are being drawn on expectation laws that are being, that were passed. I think we can, we can start working on numbers and stuff. Because I think that numbers are probably the thing that we go the most right now, but it's some of the other language items that are gonna be significant.
So should, minus the Baird report and stuff like that, should we be looking in late August, early September, I know, and then have a work session there?
That's what I'm, that would be what I would propose. And you guys tell me, I don't know if August is doable or not, I mean, trying to find dates for stuff in the summer here has been really difficult, but
Got a lot of contracts down too.
Yeah. But I'll, I'll, I'll send out some dates, try to get you know, what, when would we do a work session? Not necessarily the date, but the time of day, the day of the week. I know we did one this spring, it was on a Saturday. Probably not as desirable at this time of year on a Saturday. Good evening.
I would say, let's look at at least September, try to do this, because you got LTFM stuff that's in, falling into this too.
Yeah.
And, I mean, we just, this is gonna be a big catch-all work session.
Right, we got bond money that we have to start, you know, thinking about how does that support us or not. Yeah, yeah, I think it'd be an overall work session of multiple gen items. So. In the meantime, I will get you in your hands some of these reports, so you can start looking at it.
Yeah, especially if it's nice for negotiation committee, just kind of be able to keep it some of the
Yes, the progress.
Yeah.
So that's, that's 6.7, I guess, and kind of other.
Are you gonna be in for the audit tomorrow, the final?
Yeah, I plan on stopping around four o'clockish.
You should be able to have an idea where Esther falls into that, though, too.
Yeah.
Yep. Great. For the Baird Operational Budget Assistance, we'll move on to report 7.0. We don't have elementary or high school principal report this month, lieutenant report.
Yeah, mine is really tied up in the agenda. Really, there's nothing more to add, we're, we do have a negotiations next meeting scheduled for August 3rd, I would share. And actually, I think we have an agenda coming up today to use that as well. Otherwise, you know, we've been working on the audit, our hiring is complete. With, with the exception of a couple of non-certified positions, upon approval tonight of some certified positions. April's working on some stuff with little time management or, or leave management that's, we're gonna try to put in right before the start of the year. Yeah, the audit has been Joan's work fairly here the last month, probably three weeks till month. We had some time off over the fourth, so unless you have any specific questions, I really don't have more to add right now via the report.
All right. Moving on, 8.0 personnel, approve or not approve the hire of Anders Wald as the high school band teacher?
Yeah, Anders, we interviewed Anders three weeks ago, two weeks ago, something like that. He is a, he'll be a first-year teacher, graduate of Michi State. He graduated spring of '22. Did not work last year in a school capacity or in a band teacher capacity, did some sucking, took a year off. That's how he described it, a gap year, I guess is how he described it. And through some of the recruitment of Mr. Vanarski and who's our elementary?
Elementary.
Elizabeth, Elizabeth, gosh, Elizabeth. Crummed up Anders' name and he did apply and we did ask him in and we are recommending that we approve the hire of Anders Wald.
Motion to approve the hire? All right, we have a motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Marcus, to approve the hire of Anders Wald, Wald or Wald?
Wald.
Oh, it's Anders too.
Anders, I
Anders.
All right.
You can, or you can say it on the scale?
Zero.
Zero, one, or?
One.
Yeah.
Is that one, one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have a motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Marcus, to approve the hire of Mr. Wald as a high school band teacher. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. 8.2, approve or not approve the hire of Mary Hansen as the high school choir teacher.
So then I'm going for MTE. So in our recruitment of a music teacher for the high school, we had no applicants when we had the position posted as band choir. I suppose a month into that posting, we split the posting and we advertised it as high school band instructor and a separate posting, high school choir teacher. Seeing if there was some money out there that would, would apply. Anders did apply under the high school band posting. He is not certified, he's a certified K-12 band instructor, not a choral instructor. Has ability to teach general music, all those things, but not certified to be a, to lead an ensemble choir segment. So we were up against, how are we gonna accommodate our choirs? We have a high school choir, we have a junior high choir. We brainstormed and in the end, we approached Mary Hansen, a former teacher who taught choir and English for us and retired a couple years ago, to gauge her interests. She has interests and we believe that she will do a great job in do a great job in establishing a choir program here at Pausen High School again. But I don't wanna say but. So we were like, what package can we put together to get this person as a part-time choir teacher? Where we arrived in discussion with Mary and Mr. Janarski and myself. Mary will come to work for us two days a week, the choir rehearses two days a week. Uh, the band rehearses three days a week. She will come to us, um, and, uh, she will deliver the choir instruction and some lessons. Um, and then in order for, to make worth her time, I guess, um, she will be with us two full days a week, that's point four FTE. We have, Mr. Janarski has some other things in his mind about, she can support some current teaching. She will be considered a mentor toward Mr. Wald in the band department. She also will be considered as a mentor, uh, for Mr. Goldbuehler in the English department as a new English teacher as her background. And potentially, um, some other assignments, um, that Mr. Janarski is working on. The other piece of it is she will be a built-in sub immediately if we need coverage in the periods that she's not scheduled to be in front of kids. That was the package that we could, um, we mutually agreed to, point four FTE. That's what we're looking for approval for that. Costing. She being paid at the, the lane salary, or excuse me, at the lane interest that she left us with. Together, I can say that the two positions, Mr. Wald and Mrs. Hansen will cost out slightly less than we had invested in district healthcare.
How about, with early retirement that Mrs. Hansen took, it was like that, is there any other issues with?
So we won't pay TRA. We won't pay insurance, we won't pay, um, April, I'm looking at you with that contract. But the big thing is we won't pay TRA, we won't have to manage that, you know, she, she, she can't have anymore because she's already growing on it and we won't pay for, um, she won't be taking insurance from us. And she won't have to deal with that, that was the other one, because if you don't have insurance, she can't reveal. So given that, uh, basically we're paying her salary, her straight salary.
No other follow-up or anything? I mean, I, I think it's right, we need to support what we can.
Yes. Yeah, we think this is really a step to get that choir program maybe back to where we want it.
Well, just back in the English area, you're just, she's associated with.
Yeah.
Be good to have her back in the building. Motion to approve the hire.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Bossler to approve, approve the hire of Mary Hansen as a high school choir teacher, point four FTE. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed. Hire is approved, so moving on, eight point three, approve or not approve the hire of Joy Sun. Sunbo, Sunbo. As the elementary media center specialist?
Yeah, so, um, it has taken us literally about seven months to replace April. We scoured the, the foothills and we finally found someone to be able to replace her. Um, sincerely, Joy is, uh, is gonna be a great hire for us. Uh, she can do multiple things for us. Uh, we had multiple gain, or multiple jobs that we thought she could serve us with. Uh, in the end, the media center specialist was the position that, uh, we offered her and she accepted.
Motion to approve. Alright, we have a motion by Director Ware, seconded by Director Marcus to approve the hire of Joyce Sunbaum as the elementary media center specialist. Uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed. That's approved. Uh, eight point four, approve or not approve the hire of Nancy Francis as a bus driver?
So we, um, Nancy comes to us from vaguely school district where she currently is, excuse me, where she was currently, or was a bus driver until the conclusion of this past school year. She reached out to us. She wants to have to work for us, we are recommending the hire of her. As you know, we had a lot to change in our bus, um, uh, driver situation this past year. Um, but on that same note, I would share with the board that we are reducing to, uh, seven, um, routes. And Nancy will fill in one of those which allows us to only contract with nine per one route. So there'll be significant savings there. Um, we're excited to have Nancy, she's excited to be with us.
She had a copy in, in the bus she lived in.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know where she lives, but. Yeah.
That's sure.
Yeah.
I just think it's great, I mean, we talked about, you know, there's a whole group of people out there, ladies, you know. If recruiting and having them, uh, there could be potential roster.
Yeah. This is, uh, a lucky situation for us. Shooting their activities. And stuff, yeah.
Motion to approve the hire.
Second.
We have a motion by Director Bossler, seconded by Director Christian to approve the hire of Nancy Francis, uh, as a bus driver. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed. That is approved. Uh, eight point five, approve or not approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fall coaching assignments? Uh, coaches were listed in your packet. Do you want to have any questions regarding those?
The only thing that I would add is you can see the coaches that are listed there, um. The student head coach, we believe we may have that situation take care of, it's not finalized yet. But we're excited about it, I'm pretty, we've gone there in the last few days. So that would be forthcoming upon, uh, consent of the person that we're interested in, and we believe we'll get that.
Todd, I did get a text from the TV on the cross country. We had this discussion with Ryan, and those was negative except, so I don't know if you wanna add that or not.
Yeah.
Jonathan.
Yep.
Albert, uh, is an executive assistant, cross country coach.
So you could pencil in Jonathan and Albert. Uh, Pausen, obviously, for the assistant across country coach, and you can approve that today.
Motion to approve the assignment.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Bossler to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fall coaching assignments, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved. Eight point six, negotiations up.
Yeah, I kinda alluded to that in the superintendent report, August third is our next scheduled, uh, negotiation session with the teacher group. Uh, at five thirty PM in the, uh, superintendent's conference room. Uh, and to that end, as I also alluded to earlier, um, this Thursday, I'll be attending a webinar. Um, I'm gonna have April try to join me as well with that, on the new legislation and how it impact, impacts, uh, master contracts, so forward to talk about that.
Nine point oh, educational, uh, first item is nine point one, approve or not approve the student, uh, chrome book use and care? Just for the record, Steve, is available for questions, should, um, anyone have? Correct, Steve?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Didn't know if we had to go shake the door down there. Just to leave, so.
Yeah, basically everything's the same other than we just changed a little bit of wording and, oh. The proposed one, because we can't. Last year, we could give them a stipend if they filled out the free and reduce form. It's against the MBE rules now, so we can't do that anymore. So you'll see a highlighted part in the bottom of that.
Is it highlighted in red?
Yeah.
That's the rule only major change.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the rest are just, uh, they changed the date, things like that. If you approve it or whatever, so.
Just change date on the bottom for the approval date, but. So, what's the charge? July twenty-sixth to twenty-two. Update that one's approved.
Yeah, that first one, Steve, will need to change the approval dates under the last page, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Do these need to be approved? Yeah, they're listed in there. I have a motion to approve the student chrome book use and care. Alright, we have a motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Marcus to approve of the student chrome book use and care, uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed. That's approved. Nine point two, approve or not approve the computer email, internet acceptable use plan? Not fully listed in your packet. I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director, I'm sorry, my motion by Director Ware, seconded by Director Christian to approve the computer email, internet acceptable use plan? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed. That's approved. Nine point three, approve, nine point three, approve or not approve the proposed acceptable and use sign form, signature form.
Basically, what we did is we just converted those from paper copies into Google Forms. Those next two items are both, just converted into Google Forms, this last paperwork is all it is.
I have a motion to approve the rest of the insurance form. We're on the first one, the acceptable use. E B C J B C D form. You have a good one. Uh, yeah, that was good too. Well, I don't have all that, but further discussion. We have a motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Bossler to approve the proposed E B signature form. Uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed. That's approved. And nine point four, approve or not approve the proposed device agreement and insurance form? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Director Bossler, seconded by Director Christian to approve the proposed device agreement and insurance form? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. That is approved as well.
Sure, make sure you call these with one.
Yeah. Ten point oh, operational, uh, ten point one, authorize, um, C bits for milk, bread, fuel and storm removal? An annual, um, uh, process, so we will be setting this, uh, information up a bit. I have a motion to authorize, um, as a result to C bits, uh, milk, bread, fuels, storm removal. We have a motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Marcus, uh, to authorize to present itself to C bits for milk, bread, fuel and storm removal for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Is there any further discussion? How many vendors do we have now for like milk and bread, are we still just like, they're like monopoly?
Yeah. They have very large, it's very much just like, it's the milk and, um, the bread is, uh, whole, whole.
We don't. It's not one of that, I mean, we had like two or three bread guys, at least two milk guys in our. We get, huh?
Well, I think we said, I want to do a couple more, but we don't ever get it, did we?
Okay, I'm curious.
See what happens. It's not.
Yeah. Go back or something like that. Food, food truck, I don't.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed. That is approved. Uh, ten point two, safety and security updates.
So ten, ten point two, ten point three, kind of go hand in hand with, uh, giving an update on ten point, uh, safety, security. We've been in dialogue with, um, uh, a provider, uh, of cameras and security tech equipment for, as you know, um, we are, uh, we're, we're looking at a big picture, but our immediate concern uh, that I spoke of, you know, way back last fall, was to secure the entrances at the superintendent's office as well as the August elementary, uh, main office. So we, we feel that we've gotten it atoned or encompassed for those two projects or one project of, of those two areas. And we are ready to call for bids for that. I can tell you right now, it's, this is a total ballpark, about ten thousand per facility. So ten thousand to do that, that's the school year. And what we'll end up with is, um, uh, what we'll be calling for bid for. And Steve, you might have to join, jump in here to help me, Steve is set with me in all these meetings. Basically, a, um, the doors will be locked. They'll have the ability to intercom in. Uh, they will have the ability then to release that door to open it up. They'll be able to fob in, correct, Steve?
Yes.
So our staff, we don't, they don't have to call it, uh, teacher box, so here down in the soup's office, there's Steve over something HR related. They can apply it, program all that.
Actual doors to the superintendent's office.
The main door to the door. Well, the exterior doors, the outside will remain open so that people can get out of weather. Right now, you can, this is a high school, and it's actually the same at elementary. Once you get inside doors, you can't get into the building, but you can get into the two office spaces. Here in the superintendent's office, models in the main office. Molson, uh, there's another secure door that I'm looking at, this is kind of rude. But it isn't kind of that hallway, I think at least that lounge, that going out is secure.
Office and then like a lounge and a happy room area.
That's secure as well. So if somebody wanted to go into the main office, they could have breached and it will kind of surround those doors, so. You know, but the idea is that if the main office is still unprotected, as it is here. So this will, uh, allow people to be in and out of the weather, we want that. Um, and basically, they're contained to that best suitable in both facilities. Um, the only other place you can get in this building would be into the bathrooms. Um, and at Molson, there's nothing else there, uh, to get into. Steve, am I separating that accurately?
Yes, you are, yeah. And, um, the pricing you got is basically for the hardware, Garden Valley would do the installation of the wire. And Garden Valley was also here today to give us a quote on basically the same.
Yeah.
Type of thing.
In, in, on, uh, informal quotes, we need to call for official quotes now.
Yeah, yeah. And in Garden Valley, they're looking at, they may have to install a different system altogether, too, just. Either one would have to accomplish what we want to do.
Right, and then that's, the bid will be drawn, so that it's not, not specific to a product or a uh, certain type of camera, I mean, the certain type of camera is a system, but not a vendor, not a vendor specific.
Yeah.
Uh, we would believe we'll not have a lot of it.
Will it require any door then, have you talked with us too?
Uh, not the door, just the strike.
Alright, yeah.
So, except on vendors specific.
Yeah.
Okay, out of that, but.
But.
Discuss showing times of this to grant forward, something like that, so.
So in order to make it available to all parties, we will, you know, describe or, uh, or write the bits, so we need a product that can do this, 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 but then when we see, when we review those bits, then we'll have to make a decision on it. Yeah.
And then, what are we? And then, what are we looking at, grant on this?
This will be straight general voluntary options. Yeah.
Is it safe?
Yeah, Steve and I have talked about this, Steve's actually started a super research on that. Given all the extra dollars there are around the state. There just gotta be somebody we can access to proceed against security, so we're looking at that.
Yep.
And then the, 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 like, you're getting, uh, regular people.
Yeah. Yeah. So, uh, I guess what we're looking at, the administration call for this stuff for that project.
Motion to approve the second one of this. Second. Motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Ware. Oh, sorry. Projecting his voice is on, like, you might.
Yeah, where the name tag going on here?
To authorize, uh, offer real estate security. Uh, is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That is approved. Uh, we already did the inspect update and ten point five has been approved. Or, um, ten point six, approve or not approve the hire as we were given a 65.5 cents per mile? So you can go with that, just. It's gonna be all, it's gonna be all over. Motion to approve. But the words together is. And, uh, we have a motion to, by Director Christian, seconded by Director Marcus to approve. The new hires to remember, 65.5 cents per mile. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That is approved. Moving on, eleven point O reports. What happened to the report?
I didn't have a question, I think it's what I'm hearing now, and then Park was very close to do with a track down there, I mean. All the work you have, it's down in there, and you know, it's been wanting to do, thank you. Question hands, is because of that, we. Pretty much a public facility in a lot of ways, we need to sell a stage or anything like that, but I really, for this, sort of, just. We might want to make it more complicated or harder if we use it.
Right. Let me talk to, um, John Keller. Sure. In the, in the. In entrance.
Yeah, with all the effort that's going in and prove this and, I don't know, just wondering, you know, being. I kind of get it, you know, where it's, it's complicated, being used in a, or something.
One of the first turns I have on that whole facility, and goes back, which I also tied the LTF down. Is how we gave that facility. And because it's a car, people are really, they stack, you know, after all, or whatever. But we need to be able to get it with the Austrian access. But it'd be locked down for, for, uh, in the cars. But that means, hopefully, not very tight that we, as well.
Yeah.
So, uh, I need to talk to Ryan about that a little bit as well. The starter, do we have any battles in there?
Well, that's just sort of our, your, your.
Well, when I see, like, when we, uh, when the baseball team was on stadium, they, they, they parted, right, with the field. So I called us, I said, we can, you know, get like. Fifty V those dollars, three, whatever, play V those, those vehicles. And then called us to a lot of control in that area, almost, yeah, absolutely. So I think we can get, and I think they are controlling that area still. They drive through and, and the other times, I think it was, you know. And maybe, yeah, we haven't had the industry that, so. But on the same note, as we continue to invest in those areas. We need to be, be able to protect, protect them. Uh, as well as signage, uses, and stuff like that, so this is a check on that.
I think actually the door meeting, obviously, coming first, uh, at 7:00 PM. Also trying to get this stuff to finalize, for superintendent evaluation. Anywhere have, preference? Is it before the next one, we needing, kind of, I can go through that, or should we do a medical meeting before?
You don't want to close session, correct? I like to ask.
Close session.
Maybe I'll see if there's anybody here, or if you're returning.
Okay. Okay, let's, uh, uh, uh.
Uh, negotiating the meeting, uh, December itself, that August 3rd. Just to keep it record, um. Last month's two meetings were, um, run, well, by, um, the chair. The, the evening, the evening chair and, uh, was done in a kind of fashion. Uh, so, just, just, just for the record.
Yeah, we both have two minutes left.
With that, I will entertain anyone who would.
Right, we have a motion by Director Bosser, seconded by Director Christian. Uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, is anyone opposed? Seeing none, therefore, right now, this is consent, we are adjourned at 8:18.